All right, our first order of business today is an approval of minutes that take us from June 12, 2023 through our workshop on August 12, 2023. If anybody can't reason not to do them as one possible. All right, and I'll entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from the June 12 public and non-public session, the June 26 public session, and the August 12 workshop.
Any discussion? All right. On paper? Any post? All right, thank you very much. Now, at this time, do we have any members of the public who would like to speak?
Hello.
Thanks for coming. All right, well, if someone changes, let us know. All right, so at this point, I would love to have a report of our.
All right, thank you. Well, first of all, let's say good evening to the board, good evening to faculty and staff, now if you was at home. And Brendan, if you would, could you pull up? Thank you. So first, firstly, I would like to do is start with our mission and vision. I think that all the work that we do needs to be centered and tied around our mission and vision, so this PowerPoint and every PowerPoint thereafter will start with the mission and vision to keep us centered in the work. So that's why that is there. So a couple of things, partly still within my 100-day entry plan, and some of the the updates pertaining to that work can be found on the super newly superintendent's corner on our website, but also the superintendent's brief, and it also lists the 100-day entry plan for those who may be at home who may not have seen that. That work is listed there. More recently, I met with our first responders, met with our teachers' union. We, that picture is the administration at the new teacher orientation as we were orienting teachers to our district. We took a tour of the Cheshire Career Center, met with the Keene State President, and also I'm still working to do a structural audit of our district to really assess its strength and areas of improvement. And then lastly, we are just coming on the heels of data review, some of which we had the opportunity to review at our opening day. So that's where we are in the work and excited to see where we go from there. I plan to provide the board with a report at the conclusion of those 100 days based on the findings to really discuss where we are as a district as we prioritize the work forward. I would like to, one, on transition to our BA who is our newly hired and hitting the ground running. It's been a pleasure working with her thus far, and I'll allow her to stay.
Good evening. So it's, I think it's been seven weeks today. So I just, right, today I just want to give a brief synopsis of some of the things that I've been working on in this time. We have the 2022 audit report that's been finalized and released and submitted to the federal government clearinghouse as well as the state. We have worked on scheduling our financial and our GAZV 75 audits, and the GAZV 75 audit is, it's basically the audit and updating of retirement benefits and OPEB stuff that has, it's required to be in the financial statements, and we do an audit every other year with updating the numbers in between, so it's a year for the audit, so we have that scheduled.
Can you tell me what OPEB?
Oh, boy.
If you don't, it's okay, I just, the public special, well, me in this case, but because we like to know what those, it's easy to just, yeah, like, IEP.
Yeah, no, I understand. It's employment, something about employment benefits, and so really what it is is, you know, what is our share of the liability for the New Hampshire retirement system for retirees and for our employees of retirement age? So it involves actuarial services.
And Jamie had a question.
Maybe she wants to provide some clarification. Go ahead, Jamie.
Sorry, I couldn't find myself on the screen. Yeah, no, I was just gonna say it's other post-employment benefits. OPEB. And Lori explained it perfectly.
So we've also, each year at the end of the fiscal year, we have to file a statement with the New Hampshire Education Department, letting them know who we've selected for our auditor and when we anticipate having a report done. So I did get that report filed. We completed the food service management contract and worked with the state to get that reviewed and signed off, and so everything is in order with that. I will note that this is year five of our contract, so I will need to put together an RFP later this year to put it out to bid. And the state provides a template for that and guides us through the process to ensure that we comply with all of the federal requirements. Because we use a food service management company, I am the designated that's responsible with the state for many of the things that our contractor does, but I'm the one that's on the hook with the state, and because of that, I have to go through some required training. So I've spent a couple of days going through those trainings this month. And I've also been working on the end of year and start of year procedures so we can get our food service rolled forward so it can properly account for our meal counts and accept applications and such. So it's been a lot of tedious kind of report involved work.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. It's a lot of cheese and ice.
So the priority at work is understanding where the district is from a financial perspective as well. So I've been in conversation with Lori, figuring out where we are, how do we better ensure that the budget is more transparent, all the process, et cetera, et cetera. So we've been good, and right now we're just looking at where the house is. Consistent with that is our 2023 school climate survey. We've actually had a really, really good response from parents. The last I checked, I believe we had about 223 parents that had responded. So again, instructional staff, parents, students, guardians, those of you at home, we've listed QR codes so that you could scan and really take that survey and provide us with some some insight in regards to your perspective of the system and how it's performing. So we will be collecting that data and then reporting on that to the board at a later date in time. I believe the survey is open until the end of September, I believe. Okay. All right. One of the things that we're going to start moving towards from a district-wide perspective is our response to student behavior, and so in Charlestown, there is a pilot program that's being led by Cory Leclerc in Charlestown, the Reset Room, which is really designed to mitigate the challenges associated with students' behavior, provide students with an alternative space within the building to calm down with, under the guidance of an adult, or to really reset. You know, no pun intended. So it's one of the things that we're looking, we're going to monitor how the spaces utilized within the buildings and think about how we can roll this out more broadly. There is data that I know Cory will be tracking, and it's going to be something that becomes a little bit more robust. But it is being sort of piloted in the Charlestown area, attendance area, with some additional items. But I wanted to highlight that work. You can see Cory in the corner there. I made her take the picture, but Cory is there in the corner. Similarly, in Walpole attendance area, there is a, some software that is going to be used from, was brought to us by the Walpole Police Department. It's intervention software to help monitor an emergency response, more effectively communicate with staff more broadly, more efficiently. It's something that the Walpole Police Department was interested in piloting and working with us. Should this particular software and program be successful, we plan to think about the ways in which we can roll this out throughout the greater district. But right now, it's being piloted in Walpole and fully funded by the Walpole Police and EMS Fire Department.
That's great.
Fully funded. Walpole Police City, that's the Fire Department. So one of the first items that were structural changes was moving our school community liaison from the Special Education Department into the superintendent's office. And right now, she has been working feverishly throughout the summer to really gear up our parenting community engagement. So some of those things are the development community resources tab, which is on the district website. So for those of you at home, please check our district website, look at our community resource tab. It is designed to provide resources for learning food and other ancillary services. They are, will be posted there. She is currently working on, and she is, Ms. Cable, is currently working on establishing a community newsletter for our community partners and our building principals to, you know, to share more broadly what's happening within the district. One centralized mode of communication from a central office perspective. We are also working to highlight and fully engage with our alumni, and you'll find that there is an alumni tab on the district website as well. And this is a great time to say shout out to the IT department, who has done, they've done a phenomenal job at really working to work with that website. So I'd tip my hat to you, Brendan, and the IT department, and bragging up about your work. But this is really designed to foster engagement with the community as well as provide resources for our needed families throughout the district. So here listed here is the, if you are an alumni and you, alumni, the Latin words, the all the different variations of that, but if you are, please engage, engage with us. To know us is to love us. You can click on the district website, give us an autobiography, a picture, synopsis of where you are, your class, where you graduated from, et cetera, and we are looking to highlight and spotlight those achievements for our broad alumni to keep us engaged. There is also the Full Mountain Regional High School Alumni Association. They are, I've been in conversation with them, they are working to really bolster their efforts to galvanize the greater Full Mountain community to make sure that there is an avenue for them to participate with the district currently and stay connected. So we talked about what that would look like and different ways that that may manifest within a district, but currently, right now, they are really just trying to reach out and grab everyone who has graduated from our system. So for those of you at home, if you know anyone or you're a graduate yourself, please reach out to Full Mountain Alumni Association, and also click on the link on the website and give us an update as to where you are. So one of our hidden gems, right here in the IT department, Cal Perga, class of 2020, was an intern here at Full Mountain Regional High School. Loved it so much that he decided to integrate their system and stay, and this is an example of what we are looking to highlight, the ways in which our alumni are not only doing well as a product of our system, but they're, they're, they love it so much, they're wanting to stay connected. So we want to highlight this work, so again, I encourage all, everyone to share that link broadly and encourage others to participate with us. Our Fall Festival. So we are starting our annual Fall Festival October 14. This is one of the, this is, this work is being led by both Misty Boucher and Alice Cable, who are working to help galvanize our parent and community engagement by having activities that really bring us together as a district collectively. So this will be the first of many. We are working, we have some great activities outlined already, October 14.
10 to 3.
10 to 3, yes, 10 to 3, October 14, so please put that on your calendars and please come out. Again, to know us is to love us, come engage with us. There'll be some fun, family-oriented activities that we hope to capture that day, so please come out. At the same time, we are looking to lean in with our larger community, business community, volunteers, parents, et cetera. If you would like to volunteer or you would like to be a vendor and participate in this event, please use the sign-up link. It is on our website, also listed on our Facebook, to sign up and come participate with the full mountain, the annual festival. It is designed to really wrap, have the community provide a space for them to wrap their arms around the district and engage with us. So we are really excited about that, and if you have the time and you have any resources, please lean in, and there's a link for you to do that. The meet and greet, I'm going on tour, y'all. All right, without disrespect, it's going on tour, so this is listed on our Facebook page, it's also listed on the district website. I will be going around the district just to meet with community members. If there are people that have been able to meet with me, I've seen some people just passing in stores on my way to get some produce and things like that, so if you have not had a chance, if you have not had the chance to meet and engage with me, please show up, and I'm eager to meet everyone. So this is the meet and greet schedule, and again, you can always send me any. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Are there any questions that owners?
I just want to know how first day went for all the staff today.
First day went very, very well. So let me use this space too, I want to definitely give a shout out here to my central office staff that really worked diligently this summer to prepare the lead as we prepare to work moving forward. So one of the challenges of any leader going to any system is being brought up to speed and being caught up with different systems that are at play, and our central office staff did a really good job at really diving down into their critical areas of their work, bringing me up to speed as well as making recommendations. Today, we had an opening day that was really centered on looking at our student achievement data, where we are as a system, and we're going to use that data to build some district-wide priorities so that we can work to move the district forward. Definitely want to, definitely give a shout out to, special shout out to the curriculum instruction directors, as well as the Christian Curriculum Instructor Director and the Special Education Director, I've conjoined their titles, as well as the IT department, I can't brag enough about how phenomenal they've been, as well as everyone else that participated in that, their teachers, the teachers' union, and everyone that's been receptive to the vision that we are trying to establish at Full Mountain. And again, lastly, can't thank the board enough, it's been really, you've really helped me integrate and transition into this community. I should ask again, they come on me. Definitely thank you all, but to answer, I think opening day went well, and it's just the start, it's the start of a new day.
Thank you. Did anybody answer any other questions?
Where on the, on the website is the, is the link for the, for the alumni?
That's going to be in the community resources. Go, if you go to schools.
We're going to move that.
Okay, yeah, we are. We're working.
I have already talked about that.
We're working on placement, but right now, it's currently under the school staff, and then you go to community resources and.
Way down, Sarah. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it as a static page on the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, then. Okay. Lori, did you have anything else you wanted to add in the business report? No? Okay, well, tears separate after the superintendent. I'm going to make sure that everything else. All right, fantastic, then let's move on to new business, and we have Genesis Porter.
Hi, I'm Genesis Porter. I teach at Charlestown Middle School. I teach eighth grade ELA. Right now, it's still up in the air, but ELA, I think we're calling it for today. And I want to take the eighth graders to Washington DC in October. I apologize for the lateness of this ask, but I'm a new teacher, so I didn't realize this was part of the process. But I have 43 out of 52 eighth graders signed up to travel. It was quite a feat to get them interested and on board with us. It is about $1,300 per student. We fundraised, the students had to come up with most of the money themselves, but like we fundraised, we actually had our community support at least four students, full tuition, and then others, we've been able to like take some money off, which has been really awesome. It is five days, four nights, and we tour, it's actually October 16th to 20th. We tour Philadelphia on the way down, so the Liberty Bell, Betsy Ross House, the Mint. And then we do do the Rocky Stairs, because that's always fun for the kids, and you've been on a bus all day, you need to run up those stairs. And then we get to DC, we spend the rest of the time in DC, seeing all the museums, the monuments, things like that, we have botanical gardens, and then on the way home, we go to Gettysburg and see that. Come home, all their meals are included, it's hotel, it's, for me, the history part of it's really, really awesome, and for the kids, that is really cool part of it, but really and truly, this is a big experience for kids to get out on their own, away from their parents, and kind of gain that independence, which is why I am such a proponent for it. I'm not a history teacher, I do love history, the history teacher is going with us, that is also a chaperone. So it's a great learning experience for kids, one, just to learn that they can do something on their own, they can order their own food, like if I'm, there's going to be four adults, forty, forty eighth graders, so you're going to order your own food, we go, we're ordering it for you. You are on your own in your hotel room, there's four kids per hotel room, so we're traveling with World Strides, which is a company that our district has used previously. I know that the other middle school, actually, I, I believe, I know Violet has used them for this particular trip, and I know the high school uses this for all their international travel, so they're a renowned company, we've had good luck with them, so I'm excited. Does have any questions for me about the trip?
No, I think we used to call this the Heritage Tour.
Yes.
So I might be dating myself on that one.
No. That actually was the Heritage Tour up until right before COVID. After COVID, the YMCA was the group that always supported New England and American Heritage Tours, and it actually wasn't COVID that killed it, but COVID kind of gave them that break, and it was their insurance. Their insurance company, the YMCA, could not be insured to have students in a hotel room without an adult, but they also could not be insured, their insurance wouldn't allow adults to be in hotel rooms with students, because that also doesn't work out. So it was kind of that conundrum, and so Charlestown has not gone in four years, it's been four years of Charlestown Middle School has traveled on this. Violet went last year, my eighth grader at Violet's actually got to go, so that kind of inspired me to bring it back to Charlestown. I hope to do it every year too, so if you say yes this time, I'm going to ask again every single year, just so you know.
Well, everyone hopes so. I don't think there's a single person who ever went on that trip who doesn't remember, it's one of the best experiences of their lives, so.
Yeah, it was disappointing that it didn't. It didn't happen for my son.
I know.
So if you would like to take him, I would be more than glad to. He's a good kid, but no, I'm very, I'm very pleased to have it come back. I think, as Alyssa said, some of my fondest memories were going on that trip. It was a blast, and, and kids should be able to experience it, so I'm glad the district has the ability to do that, whether it's Violet, Walpole.
And for a lot of them, I think it will be a once in a lifetime.
I hope to someday, again, all of them together, we'll do it again, like how, because the YMCA used to take all the attendance areas together in one trip, and it was like 200 times. Right now, we're going separate, so Violet has done it, and then going again, we're going separate, I'm not sure what Walpole's doing, but if it goes well this time, I'll reach out and try to get them in too. I also, and just in case you're worried in any way about what's happening, I was a volunteer for the YMCA, have traveled twice on this trip, so as a chaperone, so it's not my first time.
Not your first rodeo, huh?
No, it's the first I've been in charge of, but not the first time I've gone, so.
So I have a question about the.
I have a question too, when you get to me.
The students who are staying or not going, is there a plan for them while they're here?
Yes, so we still, so our team right now has four, the 718 in Charlestown has four members on it, and only two of us are traveling, so there'll be two teachers still in the building, and those kids will pretty much, I mean, they'll still have their specials, like their, you know, their UA, PE, and all those normal classes, but then probably their core classes will focus more on like a project, because we'll be, and it is actually the week of parent nature conferences, so it's only a three-day, three days of school that the kids are actually missing. And so it'll only be three days, those kids that are left behind are there. And no kid is left behind because of their inability to pay. That was something that I was really big on this year. Like I did not want kids to not be able to go because they couldn't afford it. There's kids that don't want to travel, we actually have lots of new kids. So those kids were reached out to over the summer, but you're brand new in a school, you don't want to spend a week, the first month of school, and kids, you don't even know. That was kind of how that played out with the new student, but we've, we've been trying to include every single student that wants to go and make it happen.
Fantastic. Jamie, can I ask your question?
Sure, let me just figure out how to. I don't know how to, I'm sorry, I'm at work still, so I'm trying to figure out how to make my face show, and I can't figure it out, but anyway. Oh, there it is, okay, sorry, because I hate it when you're talking to a, to a minion there. So my question is this, is that ratio of student to advisor normal? That seems, it just seems low to me, four to 40.
It is, well, it's, it's one to 10 is what, is what we're, it was what required, and actually through World Strides, a travel company that we go with, that's what they will pay for. So if we want to take more chaperones, we would have to pay for them, but World Strides does provide tour guide, a bus driver, security at the hotel, so that's kind of the big part. During the day, a group of 10 kids and one adult, and they're 13 years old, which has its own, but they're, they're not little, they're not, they shouldn't be wandering off, kind of thing. Right, so that's okay, it's more like a hotel at night, and we actually have security, that's something World Strides is really big on. There's a security guard on every floor, so I know back in the AHT days, we taped kids in their rooms so that you would know if they came out, and they could get out if it was taped, but you would know. Yes, that is what, that was the YMCA policy, was to tape your door, and that's how you would kind of keep track of kids if they were coming and going at night, and it was up to the chaperones to kind of check periodically, you can all see the flaws in that. So World Strides provides a security guard on every floor who is stationed there to make sure kids don't come out of the room. And if they come out of the room, then a chaperone is notified to kind of get them, so it's not, the security guard's not going to like accost a child either when they come there, they're there to call me and say, this person came out of this room, you need to get up here and deal with this, kind of thing. So I, I'm, I'm okay with it as a teacher, I hope parents are okay with that. I'm a nervous parent, so I'm probably the best person to be in charge of this, will not lose a child.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? Glad to see you back. Me too, I'm looking forward to the presentation when you get back.
Oh, excellent, I can't wait.
All right, so we will take that up under the consent agenda, we'll all come in together. So let's move on, we have Sarah Edwards here, had her first day as principal with staff and building and everything today, so welcome, glad you're here.
Thank you so much. It was a great day. I'm here to ask you all to approve three new courses for us. We have, we have some late hires, especially in arts and music, where we, we want to utilize their skill sets. So Rissa Marina, our new art teacher, she has a degree in comic arts, which is so cool. And we'd like to provide a comic arts class and use her, use her knowledge. We also have Erin Spoyd, who is our choir teacher, but also abilities to teach guitar classes, which are like, like, there's so many kids these classes, like want to sign up for guitar class, as well as like a theater, a musical theater class. She's taken on, Erin has taken on the drama club, and she can kind of roll that into, you know, she can use that class to help build her drama club. So it's a real push for different types of arts, and I'm very excited about it, and I hope you will be too.
All right, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Sarah? I just want to say I appreciate that you are looking at these people's strengths and bringing that here, it's refreshing, and I think the kids are going to be excited about it. All right, so with that, we move to our consent agenda, if anybody. All right, so, with that, we move to our consent agenda, if anybody want to take anything off the consent agenda. All right, then I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda. All right.
Sorry.
Oh, Jamie, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry, I can't be there, it's been a blur of a day.
Yeah, all right, so, so we will go to a roll call, Jamie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm gonna say yes, all right, with that, enjoy your trip, and I look forward to seeing how many people take up your classes.
Or better be more than.
Oh yeah, totally, I'm still there. Heck yeah. All right. So, at this point, um, as for our discussion at the retreat, we do need to rescind the motion we made for. Encumbrance of funds. At our meeting, so I'll enter panel to leave them.
Right, so I make a motion to rescind the decision made in January twenty sixth meeting regarding the encumbrance of funds.
June twenty sixth.
June twenty sixth, yeah.
June twenty sixth, June. I said January, sorry, June, I wrote down June.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second. Let's be have a motion, just thought it was important, since we did get advice from our lawyer that we couldn't do that. It's important that we, in a public space, take the time to rescind that motion, we made the motion, so apply it here.
Okay, because I was gonna say, I, I unfortunately missed the workshop, so if I could just get a little background, which is why we, we had a lot of discussion about having it, so.
Yeah, so, um, there was a letter from our lawyer regarding it, he went up to everybody.
No, I, I'm sure I have, but I, I've been overwhelmed with emails.
Sure, um, it came down to, we didn't have a signed contract by the end of the fiscal year. In order to do what we had intended to do, and so we couldn't by law. So we will take this up this year and see how we can get at least the first part. With pre-aid engineering.
Yeah.
Um, going, and have some options, have some discussion, whether it's in the warrant article, or, or how we move forward with that.
I, I see the very unfortunate face on Shelley's.
No, I, I got over it. Doing the. Thing in now, but, I'm sure we will. We will be talking about it.
Yeah, it's, that, it's, it's, it's an important thing for us to move on, so.
Absolutely, so every one of us can keep it at the forefront of our minds, and make sure it goes on a, a near agenda.
Alyssa?
Yes.
So. My apologies again, because that was at my advice, and, um, I was not aware that. You had to have an actual signed contract in order to push that forward. Yeah, so apparently we've probably done it wrong here, sorry. Or maybe we have different rules, because we're a unicorn of a district, but my apologies again to, you know, everybody and to the general public about that. But I think we're gonna be in really good shape when we come off of this year. Um, I, I would like to know if we were gonna follow up on the, the discussion. Um, about whether or not any of that fifty-four thousand was still available to be used into the SAU. Um, section of the budget for anything like any of the preliminary engineering costs. I know we were gonna follow up on that, I didn't know if they'd had time.
Let's take a vote on this motion, and then we can.
Oh yes, sorry, thank you.
As that is somewhere under pressures report? So, um, any more questions regarding that motion, any more discussion?
And it, it's clear, it's clarified from now.
Okay, perfect.
Regrettably, it's reclarified.
Regrettably, agreed. So, all right.
Nothing against you, Jen, I, I know that you were trying for the best for the district when we made that suggestion, but. It's unfortunate that it wasn't correct.
All right, so, Jamie? Are you favorite the motion?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
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 Yeah. Okay. So, um. Just kind of, then can you add? The question that.
Yeah, you can just add it, um, the motion to add an agenda item to discuss. The. Extra funds.
Okay, Jamie, you wanna make that motion, and we can have that discussion now.
Sure. Um, sorry, I didn't realize you needed a motion, um. I make a motion that we discuss the possibility of any, um. Non-committed or funds that could be moved in this fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. To help with maybe looking into the engineering costs for that.
To the agenda.
We're adding that to the agenda, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I will, I'll second having that good.
Okay, thank you, Jamie?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you, so, you wanna open that discussion back up? Jamie? We've planned again what that fifty-four thousand dollars is for the discussion.
Right, so there was a, there was a discrepancy of fifty-four, I think it was fifty-four, and I went back and read the minutes, fifty-four thousand dollars. Um, from an additional FTE that was carried forward that wasn't needed or had been asked to be cut. Um, in the Walpole budget. Um, and the administration decided not to fill that position because it wasn't fully funded, it was only. Um, a lower salary funding. So, my question was whether or not, I mean, I know you, we can move funding around. And if it was budgeted initially at Walpole, the important part is with our funding formula. Is that you have to decide, if you're gonna move it out of Walpole, if Walpole hasn't decided to try to redirect it. Um, you have to do that before you set tax rate. Because then it will move from the Walpole direct method budget over to the shared method budget. Um, one of the SAU or the building, but probably the maintenance and building budget. But, um, so I just wanted to know, we were gonna chat about it, I know everybody's brand new, and they probably haven't had time to really dive into what's going on with that, but. On the off chance that somebody might have had a chance to follow up on it, I was just curious where we were.
Okay, I think Lori has an answer for it.
Uh, yes, I did look into this, and it was a position that was erroneously, um, double budgeted for, so it wasn't an. Open position that we were gonna. Eliminate and forgot to, it was just, um, it was a, a double up of a position. Um, it also doubled up all of the benefits, so we have, uh, seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-one cents. That we can, uh, do a budget transfer, um, and then, yes, I had noted that. I would need to be mindful of. How that, uh, gets transferred. Between the methods. Um, so, I, I might be reaching out for some counsel on that.
So that's both good and bad news, I guess, right, the number's larger, which helps with more engineering costs, but. The number's larger. So, thank you, Lori, appreciate that.
I know we had discussed, um, at the retreat that we were gonna check and see if Walpole had used. That somewhere within their own budget. Okay, thank you.
If we voted to move those, we'd have to do that correctly. Then, the tax rate has not been set in Walpole yet, so there would not have, Mr. Comeout, that. On the Walpole tax.
Correct. Correct, so the tax rate will be set, um, later this fall, and that's when we look at the apportionment and all of our funding methods. Um, and so, to be late, that's based on the, the budget, the pure budget and the formulas, but what we would need to do is back for this. Amount out of the Walpole budget and increase, um, the, as Jamie said, probably the, um. I don't remember which method it is, but the one that will cover repairs and maintenance of facilities, um, so. I think we can do that just on the apportionment schedule itself, and it would be clean and transparent.
I, I would assume you have, we have to get it out of Walpole's budget anyway, if we're not gonna fill it, there's no sense of leaving it there. So it's gotta come out of Walpole's budget, it's just a question of where it goes.
It doesn't have to come out of anything, Walpole. If Dr. Spence and his administration team in Walpole decide. That they're, that they would like to use that seventy-four thousand dollars, which in all honesty. Was allocated to them, was voted on to be in Walpole, and I understand it was a double. But that's, that's what they were presented with, come voting, that's what they. Think their budget is, and if they have an additional fund, I also think that it would be. It, it might be beneficial for the administration to have some time to talk to Walpole before we just. Take that money out of there and move it.
I would feel more comfortable with that, Shelley, too.
I, I, I would trust that Dr. Spence could have a discussion with. His Walpole administration team to see if there is. I, I know, there could be something that they want, they want or need, and that money might be beneficial. That's all.
So we have, um. Two more meetings before the paperwork goes to the D O E, if I understand that correctly. So those conversations have time to be held, or we have them with a decision.
I would love to use this for the parking. But I want to be fair to Walpole, that's, that's their money that they saw in their budget. When they did it, so.
I guess my thought is, being from Walpole, is if the money was put in by error. And it hasn't been collected from taxes yet. I think that it doesn't get moved, it gets reduced in Walpole by that amount, and the taxes aren't raised in Walpole. That's my thought.
Alyssa?
Yes, Jenny.
So. All great points, and I, I agree with Shelley that absolutely we should discuss it. Um, with Walpole, uh, with Dr. Spence. I don't know that they knew that they had it, Shelley, because it was a double booked position. So they assumed everybody who was being budgeted for cost that much money. And so, um. I, I think that it gives us a jumpstart, hopefully. Um, if you all agree, you know, to move it so that if they're not gonna use it or don't have a specific need for it. Um, that we could move it to where we could all share in it. Uh, and take care, get a jumpstart on the project, so that we're ready to go with numbers, you know, come. January with a warrant article, we know how much surplus we've got in there all totaled. That's just a thought.
It seems to me like, um, we're kind of saying the same thing, because it would remove it from, I mean, it wouldn't.
Except for me. Because I'm, I'm saying that when you make a mistake, you don't just say, oh boy, we made a mistake, we've got an extra money here.
Well, you can't take out of a budget, once the budget number is set, Andy, the total budget number is set. You can't take it out of the budget, you can't reduce the budget by that amount, you can set it aside and let it go back for surplus. But you can't reduce the budget once it's been voted. That's all.
It, it, it just seems to me that it would, it would take, in terms of setting the tax rate, it would take that full amount. Of that, of that money from being the responsibility of Walpole when it was not needed, it was put in there by error. Um, and it would move that, that, um, that taxable burden across the district, which in, in many ways. Makes more sense, and, and, and it's not just using it willy-nilly, we have a very specific thing that we all have agreed on, it's very necessary. So I think it would make sense for Dr. Spence to have the conversation with the, um, with the Walpole folks, and. If they're in agreement to move forward with, with spreading, spreading that across, so that we can start working on this very, very important, um. Project that we, that we need to, that we need to work on. Hear, hear what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
I hear you.
Okay. I'm gonna say, agree with me, but you hear, okay. I hear that. Thank you.
But, let's just be clear, we knew about this, um, with the prior BA. So, um, I even believe the principal was aware of this.
Yeah.
Because I believe he presented it to us, and so he was, I just want to make sure that everybody knows, we were aware of this. The BA was aware of this, um, you know, unfortunately, it was, it was. At, you know, a- afterwards, but, and I also think if, if. If there is a discussion about moving it, then, then we also need to. I just want to make sure we're setting a, a enough time aside, because this will be. I'm, I'm thinking an in-depth conversation, because at our workshop, I think there was some debate on whether or not. We should just be paving that driveway at first with no engineering, just get it paved and do. Get it paved and do what it needs to be done, and, and there were a couple people who had that mindset, and then the engineering would be for. The access, so. Um, I think there's two, two parts of that discussion that need to be had.
Well, I still don't think you can pave the, the places where the bus park, the bus maintenance depot, which has always been dirt. Do not think you can pave that without an engineering study. This is New Hampshire, you have to do that.
That's really a discussion for when we have the further discussion.
Well, I don't know when we're gonna have that further discussion.
We will, when we're discussing, um, warrant articles for the delivery of fashion, where it will all come into play for next year.
So back to the seventy-four thousand, I remember discussing with Justin, when he came to me and said, hey. There's been a mistake, we have an extra seventy-four thousand in the Walpole budget, can I use that to retain my teacher? And he was told by the administration that no, that money had to go away. He couldn't use it. So, it's just, that was then, and now. We're saying that maybe he could have, or maybe, do you have something else you want to use it for?
Well, it's come to my attention only today that it included the benefits as well, because if it had only been. The salary, there would not have been enough in the budget to continue the position. And so this is new information today, so it does lend some credence to that discussion that we could not have cut the position with only fifty-four thousand.
I, I believe the concern around the position part of it was that. That the district had decided on the cutting of, of specific positions. And so because there was an error made, it didn't make sense that Walpole got to not go with the decision of cutting. Position and cutting.
Okay, I agree with all of that, but now we're saying that, or maybe Walpole has a choice in that, using that money?
But not necessarily, not, not for, I, I wouldn't, I would think we would stay with, with the, with. The directive of that, that that is not to be, not to go for, not putting back in that position. That's my, I, I guess I was assuming, but you know what happens when we assume, so. Um, that we would stay with what our decision had been, that, that we were not going to, that we were gonna stay with. Our decision had been that there was gonna be cuts across the district, as a district, we were gonna make those cuts, and that. And that we were gonna go with that, so that if, but Walpole still has this money, so if there's other things that they need. They, it, it's, it's, it's allocated to them right now, if, if not, then, um, then it could be used by the district at the whole.
Jamie, do you want to add something?
Yeah, the only, and the only thing that, thank you, Sarah, that was very, a good synopsis of what occurred. Um, the only thing, I guess I would add is that. And I'm speaking as an at-large member now, um, and maybe Walpole, because I live there, but, um. I, I agree that we didn't know, it was seventy-nine thousand, I think, is what she said, and that. Um, if they're going to think about a discussion with Dr. Spence about a need. For this kind of funding, I would hope that it would be a one-time. For this kind of funding, I would hope that it would be a one-time expenditure, right? Not an expenditure that we make that has um ongoing ramifications for the budget. Um you know, for future budgets, so that, you know, when, when mistakes are made and money is additional. That's available, that you use it, you know, prudently and only purchase one-time expenditure types of things. You know, that you don't have to up a budget in order to um, you know. Take care of it moving forward, so that's on all my, that was my only thought.
As an example, Walpole could simply do exactly what Charlestown is doing and send uh. Forty-two kids to the um heritage, or what used to be the heritage uh trip to Washington, D.C., one-time expense, there goes that money. If they wanted to do that.
So that looks good district-wide, that Charlestown kids have to raise thirteen hundred dollars a piece, and Walpole sends their kids for free?
I'm just saying that's the, it just happened to come up to fifty-four thousand.
Yeah, sure.
You wanted a one-time project.
Or well, there, there might be something, like they might need to have uh the gym floor replaced or something, that I, I don't know. So.
Justin was talking about some security stuff last year, that um. I think maybe he, he wasn't gonna be getting, so that, when I. Said I think Dr. Spence and his administration team need to sit there and talk, that, that was my idea, cuz I know that Justin was. A little frustrated with something, and I know there were some building things that he wanted, and. I'm not exactly sure that he got them, so that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying, before we take the money from Walpole, I would like to give. Dr. Spence and Walpole an opportunity to have that, this full-fledged discussion and see what they would like, if, if. If Justin and Dr. Spence feel like, you know, this, this was a, a mistake and it should go across the board, then. Then I respect that, and that's, and if Dr. Spence said that today, I would be like, okay, fine, if you want it to go across the board. Let it go across the board, but. I wanna make sure Walpole has the opportunity to have their voice.
Can I, can I make a suggestion and? If I'm out of line, but um can we um table this until Dr. Spence has had time to discuss this with his administrative team? Is that?
There's no motion on the table, so we can't table anything cuz there's no motion on the table.
Oh, we're, oh, we're just discussing, I'm sorry, okay, great, thank you.
I think what we can do is add it to the agenda for September eleventh. Which will give um Dr. Spence two weeks to have a discussion, and then he can bring the information back to us, and then we can make a decision. And that also gives us two more weeks um if we should need it for more discussion. Before, and I'm not gonna remember what the actual document is that goes, but October first is our deadline.
Right.
To send it for tax saving purposes, so just, does that work for everyone? Does the consensus?
Thumbs up.
All right, you're outside of that, Misty?
Yeah.
Perfect, all right, then let us move on. To um developing a process for the accounts payable approval and sign off. Uh Lori has a huge folder here for us, and I know um. In the past, we've had some discussions about how best to do that, so that we're not paying attention to them in the midst of our discussions here, cuz. Frankly, we've had some really good discussions, and everybody here is a part of it and adds to it, and um I'd like that people aren't drawn away from it to sign on things that. Our list of things, so um Lori comes to us with some experience, and I can hear what her ideas are on how we'll move forward with that.
Okay, so um I wanna start the discussion with RSA one ninety-seven twenty-three A, which discusses the treasurer's responsibilities. And the treasurer is supposed to um maintain funds um and not make any payments until the board has approved the manifest. The current process, as I understand it, does not function that way, so we're not upholding the RSA. Um the RSA also allows the board to designate a minimum of two. People to review and approve the manifest. Um and so in my past experience in different districts, um this has been utilized, where the board has designated two people. Um in one district, um those two individuals would come in every week, because it was payroll one week, payables another week. On alternating weeks, but every week we had a manifest, so those individuals would come in, we had a set date. Um and time that the manifest will be ready after this time, they would come in, they would grab the folder, go sit down. It gave them opportunity to ask questions if they wanted to get in for more information. Um the invoices were there, they could review the invoices, they would sign off, and um. That that was pretty much it, I don't remem, I don't recall if I had to then also make a um. I, I'm not sure that I had to, to take it to the board, to the full board, because those designees had approved it, and they were acting on behalf of the board. So I never obtained the full board signature on that manifest, um then um. The other district that I worked with that designated two individuals, uh we had a somewhat of a, a, an electronic process. In place and then COVID hit, um so we would generate the manifest and the documentation. And everything would get emails to, when I say everything, the uh list of the checks and the vouchers and the, you know, who it was for, what account it was being charged to. And the amounts, um that would be emailed to the designees. We would receive their um approval via email, um and then we would process payment. Um and then at every board meeting, I had to certify, I had to, to come prepared with a statement. That, you know, I certified that the um activity had been viewed and was charged correctly to the appropriate funds and such. Um and it listed each of the manifests, so we had all of the payrolls uh manifest with the sum subtotal. And then all of our payables with the subtotal, with the total manifest for the period, so every, you know, it was bi-weekly board meeting, so every two weeks. We had an updated um certification of the manifest, if you will, um.
I just wanted to be to sign up, the board sign up on that one.
And, and the board didn't sign up on anything, actually, it was, it was um. Uh a statement that I read, and it was recorded in the minutes, and the board took an action approving it, okay? Um so in, go, hopping backwards, revisiting the other district where we had people sign off, we also. Um we would come up with a summary page, because if we processed. Payables on different manifests by fund, um we would have. We would combine them into a summary page, and it was more often that we did that with payroll instead of payables. Uh because you could have multiple payrolls just by function of our CBA agreements. Um you know, so if you had those multiple payroll manifests in the one-time period. There would be a summary sheet that you would sign off on, and not a sheet for each manifest. Um so those are the two different ways that um I've seen this work in other districts where the designees um really carry the responsibility. Uh where I did the certification statement, um the motion was always made by one of those designees that had reviewed and approved the manifest. Um they always had opportunity to ask questions um and ask for documentation. Documentation is always available in the office if you wanna come in and view it, um. And it, it seemed to work well, um if we were going to go with that sort of a format with the electronic signature. Um I think that we also have to be mindful, I think it's RSA two ninety-four dash E, and that talks about uh securities and using. The electronic signatures, and I, it didn't dive in far enough to know if we have a board policy regarding the electronic signatures. Um but that might be something we would need to explore. Anyway, we look at this, we do need to update policy DJ, D G A and D K. To reflect whatever decision and approach the board would like to take. Um but what, what isn't working now is, these are the manifests that we processed this summer. So I um, none of this has been approved by anyone. And I'm not comfortable with that, I don't wanna continue this way.
Well, thank you for bringing them to us, does anybody have any thoughts?
Oh, can, can I add one more thing?
Yeah.
Um so well. It would be great to have the approval on payroll and payables. I am going to submit my ACH payroll file with or without your approval. At some time it will come, but I have a legal obligation to pay people uh, you know, on schedule and on time. And so that ACH file has to get to the bank with sufficient time to clear, to make sure that everybody gets their payment Friday morning.
Yeah.
Um so I would, that, that's the, that's the, I guess, a little bit of an exception, I still am seeking approval. Um but if you're detained and getting back to us, that payment will not be detained.
Appreciate that.
So personally, I like the idea of, of, of two people being designated and going in and physically meeting with you and being able to. Ask questions, et cetera, um and I never have, I mean, this is how I've done it, how we did it, how. Not we, I wasn't on the board, I was, I was administrator, but um in Springfield, Vermont, they did the same thing, really. But it means that, that everybody on the board for a period of time, and even if we're not reading every single page like Alyssa does. Um and Jamie does, but um where, where, which we probably all should do, but um. It, even if you're just signing your name, you, you have to be thinking whether you're getting every page, you have to, you know, and so, and it, it never made sense to me that I was. That we were just signing, something we had no idea in many ways what it was we were signing, so. I like the idea of two people being designated who under, who can understand. The, the financial part of this whole game, um I, I understand the educational part, I don't as much understand the, the. Financial part, and so, and I, I'll be the first to admit that, and so um it, it makes, it makes a lot of sense to me that we would have. Two people who do understand and have interest in, a real interest in that, to be able to really sit down, go through it. And I would feel comfortable with those people being able to do that, so that's, that's my, that's my opinion, who would those people be?
Alyssa? I have my hand up. So the board took action on this prior to Lori and Dr. Spence coming, and Lori, the second. Way that you described it is how it was supposed to be having been done. Um but our former business administrator never really got around to uh rolling it out completely. Um that's how we do it here at Hannover Dresden Norwich. It's emailed to the entire full board, two people are tasked with re- reviewing all of it. Sending questions if they have them, and then signing off on it electronically prior to them actually being sent out. Uh we send up here on Fridays, I think you guys send on Thursdays, or maybe it's Fridays, I don't remember. Um but we had actually taken a vote when I first got on the board about doing it that way. Um and then bringing uh an overview sheet, and for some amazing reason, I can share my screen today, so I'm gonna share this. Bringing an overview sheet. And our overview sheet up here looks like this, and it does exactly what you say, it shows all the voucher dates, the voucher numbers, the type. And then it breaks down all the funds that we use, oh, one, oh, two, oh, four, you use ten, twenty, uh twenty-one. You know, we all have different account strands, as you know, cuz you've worked at multiple places, so, and then. Our boards up here, which is what I had hoped would happen there, so you don't have to sign your name fifty-two times. Um there would be an overview sheet similar to this, and then we sign off on the bottom of, of one overview sheet. And that's after it's all been, you know, emailed out. Um if we're gonna go to two people in person, obviously I work all day long, so, and I'm out of town, so that's not gonna be me. But if we did decide as a board to do that, I would still like to be able to receive them electronically, weekly as they're issued. As, because I know the software does a PDF pretty quickly and easily, and we can just send it out. But, so thank you for bringing it up, yes, we've had this discussion before.
Um I will also add to this, that Joe and I have been going in for the last year and reviewing them, what was on Thursday or so, up until. About June.
Yeah, up until, up until she decided she didn't wanna do this anymore.
Yeah, so um we have been reviewing them in time, and then it would come forward after, but this is, I apologize if. That is where we're at, so we will amend that.
And as trigger, I will be willing to.
Nobody signed anything.
Stay and go after, after this meeting and just sign all those things myself.
I will gladly stay, so you can get this taken care of tonight, but moving forward, what do we as a board want to do, do we like? To continue with, uh for example, Joe and myself going in once a week and signing off, or do we wanna have it just sent out electronically? Have it signed electronically?
It appears we already voted on it.
Right, we'd already decided that we were gonna have two people go in, uh I, I didn't, I thought we had decided that that, and, and you guys have been doing it, so I.
Yeah.
So.
And we can change it.
But you can change it if you want to cha-change the vote, take a different.
But I don't want, I, I, it sounded as if the statement was being made that it hadn't been happening, but it, it has been happening, so.
Well, none, none on Lori's watch, because I didn't really wanna bother with what the, we're going on, but.
So it's just gonna be re-implemented ASAP, so that way the B A feels comfortable. With the process that we have tasked her to do, and so she doesn't feel like she's not following the proper RSA.
And then from, my, my que, my question is what, we had you guys going in and reviewing the, the um, the forms. But then we still were all signing everything, so would we drop off the part where we're signing everything then, if the two of you are reviewing everything and being as. As spokesman for, spokespeople for the board, unless there's someone like Jamie who would like to see?
I, I would like to add in that I think what Jamie showed us, there's something that we should really consider. Getting a, getting a summary sheet that all of us sign after the thing is all over, I, I think that would be.
That would be.
It's sort of a hybrid of the two, I'd still like to go in and see it in paper. And be able to flip through it, because I just, everything's.
Yeah, I can do it, because it's a huge, it's a huge amount of money that I'm getting for being treasurer, so I should really should be the other person to do.
So with that being said, um would you be able to do the summary sheet, and we can all sign off on the summary sheet? Every two weeks, and then you have somebody, two people, once a week to come in and sign?
We can do some sort of a summary sheet, yes.
Okay.
Uh so, I just for, uh um I'm hearing two different methods that were.
We're sort of.
Decided, uh so I just want to know what to expect, two people to come in in person, but I'm emailing it to everybody?
Yeah, I think that, that would be the, the best thing, that, that sounds like the most efficient method to me, emails don't cost anything. Um and, and the um, and I would like to be able to, to come in, but, but I, I, I don't wanna rush you, so. Are you ready by like Friday, Friday during the day to?
So um on Fridays, it's payroll, payroll, I mean, people are, that's hitting their banks on Friday, so um we like to have that sent to the bank on Wednesday. Um and we do have a new person in the accounts payable role. Um and our goal is to pay on Thursdays, that I'm not sure. Um I'm not sure if she's in the place yet, where I can say that Wednesdays, people are gonna come in and look at our manifests, so then they. Um can be paid on Thursday, or if we need you to come in on Thursdays, so we can submit them on Friday, mail on Friday. Uh I, I, I think I wanna double check with her, just to see where her comfort level is on that, because I don't want to give you. A four-hour window, and then it's gonna delay everything, um.
I think we can.
I'm retired, I'm, I really don't have anything other to do, you know, other than gardening, so.
Would you, would you feel more comfortable if you had an official motion of who we are designating officially? As.
Yes, we're in a new fiscal year, and I think that would just be cleaner.
So I make a motion that Alyssa Bascom and Joe LeVette are. Our designated when it comes to, what, what do you want me to call it? Pay, it's more than just payroll.
No, it's the manifest.
The manifest. Our designated. For signatures of the manifest.
Second.
Fantastic, all right, Jamie? Are you a favor?
Oh.
Are there any more discussions?
There's just a discussion about this, because I'm, I'm with that motion, but I do worry that if these two people leave the board, not some of us off. It was, can't go to the, at the U office on weekdays to do that kind of thing, so there, as you look at the policy that if you written. In a way that can change back and forth, so that um we have an option to be a little more flexible in the future.
And could we receive it by email? I'd still like to receive it via email.
Um I do wanna um clarify that if we're gonna have two people coming in person, it is good to have a design, uh, an alternate designated. Just so if somebody's on vacation or files ill. Just so if somebody's on vacation or files ill, um, we, we're not scrambling, calling all the board members, like, who can come in? Um, we need to know who our, like, backup is. Well, I, I can be a, a backup, but I would not wanna be the only person there, because I would really, I would need to, I need you there, Alyssa, to know.
Yeah, I, and I'm sure Lori can answer any of the questions.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
But I would gladly.
No, I won't, I won't be there in a minute. No, I will not be.
I was gonna add, um, any member as an alternate?
So I'm making a motion to amend the motion. Add Sarah Vogel as the alternate in, um, it's signed the manifesto.
So I have a second to the amendment.
Can I second it, if my name is in it? Yeah, I'll second it.
Jamie, can I have a minute? All right, so I will take, um, a vote on the amendment to the original motion. Jamie?
Yes.
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 Yes. So with the approval of the amendment.
The motion as amended.
Okay, thank you. So, Misty, can you read us the motion as amended?
Uh, to, um, appoint Alyssa and, uh, Alyssa Bascom and Joe Lebeck. As designatedees for manifest approval, that's how I wrote it, uh, with Sarah Vogel as the alter. That work?
Works for me. Any more discussion on the motion? Jamie?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you so much. So we'll just be in discussion, and you can let us know what they were best.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, next up on the agenda is to appoint a delegate assembly representative to the state. And it is my understanding that Joe still appreciates being in this role.
I make a motion to appoint Joe Lebeck as our delegate assembly representative.
Joe, would you like the appointment?
Yes, no, I mean, I, I, I enjoy going there and, and, and talking and, and. Meeting other school board members and stuff like that, so I, I do enjoy, I, I've gone for two years in a row and I enjoy it, but. I'd, I'd be happy to do it, but if anybody else wants to do it, I'm happy.
Since the motion hasn't been seconded yet. Can I keep you to amend the motion to then?
Andy seconded it.
Would you like to amend the motion?
Because I think we do need, I, we do need as a board to give Joe the authority to act on our behalf. That's part of that motion too. So I make a motion to amend the motion, add the following language. And to vote in the desk, and to vote in the district's best interest.
I'll second that. Any discussion regarding the amendment?
I think it's good addition.
Okay, so, Jamie?
Yes.
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 Yes, all right, thank you, Joe. Do we need to go back to where Joe was?
Yeah.
That's okay. Jamie? Um, so now, we're. We vote on the original amendment as.
Original motion as amended.
Okay. Jamie?
P, yes.
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 Yes, thank you. All right, I look forward to hearing what you discover and how you represent that.
I will do my best.
All right, uh, now, D, our action agenda is kind of fun. Um, so the state of New Hampshire has opted to increase inadequacy aid. In school districts this year, of course, after we voted on our budget, and so now we have to decide, uh, how. Or if we want to accept that, and what happens if we do. So, do we have a total for how much is coming in?
So, the, to the maximum, well. The maximum amount that we could put on a warrant article to, um, appropriate for other, for uses other than tax. Reduction is two hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and eight dollars. If this is something we wanna choose to move forward with, I would need to try to dissect that number. Into the different areas and formula, methods.
Okay, well, if it goes back against the tax rates, it will have to go. Be a portion.
Right, 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 sure.
So the question before us is, um, if we choose to accept this and. Allow it to go directly against the tax rates, we can do that with a simple motion. If we would like to. Use this for any purpose, we need to have a special meeting that, uh. Two, is it two-thirds or sixty percent of our registered voters need to attend?
No, no, we actually don't, no, we don't, you know, we don't have to have that. Okay, now, for, for, so when it's, when it's a change in the legislative funding formula after the. The budget is set, um, and, and this is restricted to the educational funding, I believe. Then it's, um, you don't have to have that two-thirds. Yes, okay, so if you, if you had ten people show up.
Yeah, then they're making the decision.
How much, how much are we dropping? Two hundred and what?
Two hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and eight dollars. And we do know that we have a significant surplus that will be affecting.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I know it's a pain in your butt, and I apologize, because you can't see my hand raised. Um, I'm sorry, I, my question is, do we know how much surplus we're sitting on that's gonna go back against taxes? And the reason I ask is because you add another three hundred thousand dollars to a huge number, our tax rates are gonna nosedive. Um, and then come right back up the year after, and that's not a comfortable place. So my question is, on this, um, allowance, because the state has changed the formula. Are you telling us that we could maybe take this money and use it towards, uh, that project?
A parking lot?
Or engineering?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a special meeting.
Yeah.
With no two-thirds.
Don't have to have fifty percent or two-thirds, no.
Wonderful.
Can we talk briefly about what are the logistics of holding a special meeting?
It's a full ballot, it's a, it's held like an annual meeting, basically. It's a, yeah, supervisors of the checklist, it's the whole kit and caboodle.
Without a deliberative.
About the deliberative session, it's like a town meeting, right?
So.
That's how I understand it.
So Misty, what about three thousand dollars?
Probably, yeah, three to five, probably, it depends on how we, then we need to decide if we're gonna. You know, contract with an electric ballot company, that whole, you know, that all plays into it, how we wanna do it, but yeah.
Good, Shelley?
So, um. What, do we have, oh, Jamie asked how much we're, we're sitting on a surplus, because. We're giving it back, which is.
Right, um, so I've been working on that, and I'm not to the point where I have a firm number. I would say, um, it is definitely over a million, um, maybe approaching closer to one point five. Um, but I don't have a firm number yet, but i- i- it's significant enough that Jamie's, I, I shared age, James can tell. So.
I heard a question, we might have to hear the answer, or clearly, I'm not sure, listen, you said if we've made this decision to hold a special meeting, we had to do that by when?
No, we have, yeah, I mean, it's.
So, so, yeah, this would need to be held in order to set the tax rate, so we would wanna do it in September.
I'm sorry, Shelley. Go ahead.
Uh, I, I make a motion to call a special meeting for changing educational funding. In the amount of two hundred and eighty, eighty thousand dollars.
And how many cents?
I don't know. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Is there any discussion about?
I'm just, I'm not, I'm gonna vote no on that motion, I think, it's too much to get done in the time, timeframe, we should just send it back to the voters.
What, so, in the beginning, I used to always think it's really great to give the money back to voters. Um, and it is, it's their money, however, it nosedives tax rates. Which means when, and, and the, and one of the biggest problems is, is maybe as a board, or maybe as a district. We're not very good ex- explaining what this does to people and how it affects them. And, and can in a very negative manner. So if we nosedived the tax rate, because we had one point five, and we don't have that one point five again. Then what ends up happening is you get those five, four, five, six, seven dollar increases, and then people think. Because it's, they, because they go up, they're like, oh, see, the school is raising, raising money, and they're, but they're not doing more. And it has nothing to do with that. The school really isn't doing anything different than what they've done all along. Except for the fact that there was a surplus, most likely because they couldn't hire enough, you know. We're going through a staffing crisis, so there, it's not because of mismanagement of monies. It's because the staffing ebb and flow, right, and all this other stuff, and then. And it is good to give the money back, and you, and, and you should, on. You know, you should to that extent, but at the same time. It really hurts people to do it that way. Like, the budget committee, that's why I think there's a budget committee, the budget committee's there to try to look at these surpluses. That have been pretty big over the last couple of years, and they try to. You know, help the, help the district, or the district and the budget committee work together to try to eliminate. That surplus as, as much as they can without affecting the educational experience of our students. But I am very concerned if we add another three hundred, four hundred thousand to that surplus. It, it's, I, I, I think it would be crippling to some people, had their tax rate dropped.
I see you, Jamie, but Kevin.
Yeah, so I understand all of that, I, I'm starting to vote no, I think we don't, we do need a warrant article.
Yeah, I have, I, I have a logistical question on this before we go any further, before we put a motion on the table, because I don't think it's that clear. Jamie, do we have to also discuss what's gonna, if, okay, so we're gonna make a motion to accept and appropriate these funds, but don't we have to have. It clear on the article how we're gonna actually use, we can't just take the money for, like, with the, the. With the warrant article, just say we want the money back, and then we determine, and doesn't the warrant article have to articulate how we're gonna use those funds? That's my question.
Yeah, I believe the article needs to articulate how we use the funds, but I think that, I, I do not believe that it has to be. Completely specific to say. I think we could make it broad enough that it would say, we would like to, you know, eh, uh, appropriate the funds. In order to use to, um, upgrade the, um, you know. Parking lot and driveway for the high school, right? And so then, you, you, then you treat that as a project, and then you could, again, phase it, a phase one, phase two, right? And, and so, you know, it can be written that you would, you can write it broad enough. And you know, and then if the people don't like it, they vote no, and it goes back, right? I mean, you're giving them a choice. But it, but not taking it to them at all gives them no choice. You know, I'd rather take it and have it fail, so at least you know what the hell they're thinking, than to not bring it at all. And have people say, well, why didn't you give us a chance to vote on it, right? But yes, Misty, I believe you have to have purpose stated in the warrant article.
Lori, so, um, I do wanna point out as well that, um, if we choose to move forward with this. I need to let the Department of Revenue know as soon as possible, because they need to return our budget that we posted in March. So I can revise it. So this ties into Misty's question and what Jamie was saying, as well, we have to have a purpose. Um, I don't know how the, the warrant wording would go, but it has to, I have to update our budget to reflect the additional income. As well as the use, and so when you're updating your budget, we have to show our intended use of the additional funds. In that budget, and then we have to post everything, just as we would for a budget hearing in a, a regular meeting. So, can I amend the motion that's on the floor?
We, yeah, or we, we didn't even really, I don't even know if we put the motion in effect before we voted on it. So we just had to hold a special meeting to accept the funds, I think it's.
Right, so, right, so that, that, I, I just, I wanna amend that, say, to, uh, hold a special meeting to, um. For changing education funding under R S A one nine seven three three A, um, to use that, to use that money. Towards the parking lot and drug, and, um, access road, um, project.
No reason to put the access road in there, that two hundred and eighty isn't gonna be the access road.
Right, you're right, Shelley, it won't pay for it, but if you use any of the money to do anything like, you know, draw up plans or anything like that. If you just, if you reference it, then nobody can question it. It's not that you're gonna use, you know, that it would actually carry the whole, the whole cost of the road. I'm sorry, I frustrate you. I'll shut up.
No, it's, no, it's the process, Jamie, it's not you.
It's. If, if we want to say towards the engineering for the project, for the, for the access and parking lot project. That, that would specify that that's what we were gonna use that money for, is towards the engineering on that project.
A question, thi- this money is coming back a- as state adequacy aid. So normally, state adequacy aid is spread out with the towns, right, depending on need, whatever their rates are. So I know we wanna use money for the parking lot project, but if this is adequacy aid, why wouldn't it be distributed like adequacy aid is? To the five towns.
Shouldn't we have the finish, finish the process of getting the amendment in place, so that then we can?
Well, I need, I need to have a full understanding before I wanna go to a special meeting for taking money for something that we shouldn't use it for.
Absolutely, but we don't really have a, anything on the table yet, so could, can, can we put, can we finish the amendment to make it so that that's really what we're talking about? And then we can have all this discussion. I mean, all I can do is second to that amendment, and then we can have the discussion, so.
I would second your amendment in its generality, I would not make it more specific.
Okay.
So, for clarity, right now, it's written as to hold a special meeting pursuant to one ninety-seven three. To use funds toward the parking lot and access road project?
Project, right.
Do we have a second?
Jamie seconded it.
All right.
So now we can have all that discussion.
So, again, to your point. Andy, I think they, that the state, when they send it back in a total amount, they assume that you know what your formula is. And that it would be used for the greater good of all, or, and or broken down to what it should be if you don't use it. Uh, as a, you know, as a cooperatively used amount.
And I ask a question?
Yes.
Is this a new, this is an increase over the expected state adequacy aid that we were supposed to get? Which was thirty-seven hundred bucks a kid, or something like that, um, so this is, this is additional money. Do we know if this is going to be permanently included, or is this a one-time deal?
Permanent, it's permanent, it goes up two percent per year, they've. Permanent, it's permanent, goes up two percent per year. They've actually put an adder into it.
Okay, so, so we would continue to get more money than we've been.
Unless your kid count drops, right, because it's based on headcount.
Yeah, I know, I understand that. It's just, yeah, it's just like, wow, four years on the board, state finally gave us a number.
So are they going to continue to give up this every August? Because that's what happened last year as well. They're going to actually add it to the regular, so we can count forward in the budget when we vote on it first time, we don't have to go through this process every year. So they changed the formula in all of our benchmarks, so the, you know, the base amount per student and the differentiated aids are all going to increase by two percent each year. It's not tied to CPI, so that's beneficial. But then they, in the formula change, they did away with the old stabilization grant, I think, and put in a new whole harmless grant, and starting at fiscal year twenty six, that will decrease by X percent each year. So while we're getting two hundred and eighty thousand more this year, if we were wanting to count on that long term, it's not stable. The, the financial gurus at the Department of Education feel that if you're looking long term, it's not stable income to build into your budget, so like new programming or it's more, it's something that should be used for a one time. But our formula has increased, it has changed and provides for an increase each year, as long as our.
Yes.
Yes. I knew that, but had, there had to be some.
So to Andy's point, it sounds like it is based two percent on what you were getting before for students, since we have pounds of differing needs, it's not across the board based on simply ADM. So is there a way to get that kind of information? Like, they're not breaking it down for town like.
She's not going to be able to get that information today because we have to make a decision pretty much today, correct?
Yeah.
If we wanted to do a special meeting, we need to know ASAP, either today or tomorrow or by the end of the week. It's not something that you're going to be able to investigate, like, how much adequacy we L. A. Does each Charlestown student get? And I want that, you know, per student compared to what Alstead students get. Charlestown has an enormous amount of adequacy aid. There's no doubt about that. I think it might be the largest in the district. But we also pay the most when it comes to shared expenses up, up at the high school, so do you see where I'm going with that? Like, I, I understand, but I think we're in a crunch, so we're either going to give the money back or we're going to do a special meeting. And we've got to kind of decide ASAP.
Jamie?
So that's a great point, Shelley, because it probably, the bulk of it is coming off of your section, right? And consequently, if we have to raise the money to do a project, the bulk of it's going to come off. However, I did want to share this, that this would be method three if it, if it goes to maintenance, and in method three in maintenance, the shared amounts are not based on kid, kid headcount. They are based on dollar amount value of buildings, so that Charlestown and Walpole are much closer together in percentage in that method based on the last one that was just posted. So I, I just think it would be, I do, I think it would be a great use of the additional funding for a one time, you know, to get that project at least started and kicked off. And then, you know, Lori can say whether I'm right or wrong on this, because I'm sure you don't have trust in what I'm going to say, but I know that if you, you know, if we can get an RFP out and figure out what the actual costs are, I think we're going to have enough in the high school capital reserve, assuming the world doesn't go upside down on oil rates. And then we'll be able to show, you know, with this money, we could start the project, you know, as soon as possible, and then once you're actual under contract and signed, you can have monies that are raised in two different years to pay for it. So we could draw money out of the capital reserve to pay for it and still kick it off with the same timeframe that we had hoped for. My other question, though, for Misty is, what's the timeframe on the meeting? Is it twenty day notice or thirty?
I know that, I, I don't have all the details. I, I think it's the same as it would be for your annual meeting, so isn't that like ten days? Yeah. I, I have, there's a couple of, they're putting out a couple of workshops on us, Jamie, that I plan to attend.
But you think we have enough time over the next thirty five days to do it?
I can try.
We can help.
I, yeah. Yeah.
It will take a significant amount of.
It's going to be a tremendous amount of work.
So I would just like it stated in the minutes, if, if this goes to a warrant that we need to try to make sure that it gets into method three, please? And then I move the motion.
Okay. Will you read the motion for us?
To hold a special meeting pursuant to one ninety seven three A to use funds toward the parking lot and access road project.
Jamie?
P. Yes.
Yes.
No. Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yeah. So by a vote of five to two, we move forward. Thank you for the great discussion.
Now, mind you, this vote is all contingent on whether or not we can actually pull this off before tax rate. Because if we can't, then what we just did was null and void. So, I mean, I know Misty will do her very, very best, but.
Tax rates by the October twentieth usually, October twelfth to the twentieth, so. I'm happy to help you any way I can.
Yeah, we're probably going to have to call a special meeting back together to figure out what the war, like, we can try to put the war, you know, for you to accept what we're going to put forward. So, but I'll keep you posted. I'll do some, make some phone calls tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay. At this point. Like, you want to accept it? Do you have to? Or do you want to bring it next time?
Alyssa, just for general purposes, I just want to tell the board that, and I've, I've been consistent on this throughout my career here. I agree with what you did. I don't disagree with it, but if I'm ever presented with information one night and expected to make a decision that night, I, I usually, I won't do it. I have to have prior notice and, you know, of what our options are and what is legal and not. I just have to have more information to make those kind of decisions.
Absolutely understood, and I appreciate that you have to stick to that for sure. If it wasn't something that was such a time crunch, I think we would have taken a little more time. Which is why I appreciate the discussion and all the good points brought up, so. Thank you for bringing that up. Do we want to simply move the pressure of support to our next meeting?
Okay.
We will do that. We do have a non-public busy evening.
You can.
We won't.
We made, we made, we made, we made a commitment to one another, to all of us here.
I think we can do it in twenty minutes, Shelley.
Okay, I'm just saying, we made a commitment.
So the workshop, the workshop's off schedule.
Right.
Yeah.
So. All right. Does anybody want to make a motion? Well, I'll make it. I make a motion that we go into a non-public session for the purpose of ninety one A, three, parts B, matters which have discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any student other than member of the.
I second that.
P. Yes.
Oh, sure.
Yes.
Yes.
There, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And Jamie?
Yeah, so can you?
Call your cell phone.
And leave Jamie on. Can you do that?
The best practice is we just need to have Jamie rejoin.
Okay. You do that, Jamie? Just have you rejoin. We'll shut this meeting down and rejoin.
Okay. Sure.